until the month of May, where it sometimes feels like with projects, things just come together like right at the last minute, and, and things came together. So we've been busily identifying and interviewing students and their families. We feel like we have a full roster of students ready to go, and we need to find that teacher,
Saved within the secondary staffing process. So, one of those three point eight FTEs is being allocated towards the school to work teacher. Because this is a secondary, this is a secondary position. And so, we're shifting that over to this program. So, it's through that efficiencies and cost savings through secondary staffing.
And so, if I read it correctly, there's, this is a three-year program, correct? There's years one, two, and three.
Well, we projected, we projected out years one, two, and three. And so, year one is with juniors, year two would be juniors and seniors. And we would hope, we would continue, we would hope that it's doing well and we're going to continue on.
So, does that mean that those, that those salaries are, are going to be covered those three years as well?
So, you have to remember that those twenty-four students would be attending the high school anyway. And so, if you take, if you take those students, they're going to be pulled, they're going to be lifted out of classes from the high school campus. And so, their, their enrollments in those courses is transferred over to the school to work program. And so, that's really not a, not a difference in, in FTE. So, we would have to account for that teacher or for those students being in classes anyway.
Alright, so that's, that's one answer.
Yep.
So, but my other answer is, is, or my other question is, are, so, the, the organization that is providing the support, the Margaret A. Cargill for.
For the, for Arts Corps partnership.
Yeah, for the Arts Corps.
Yep.
Is that covered for three years or is that just covered for a first?
It's covered for the first year and a half.
Okay.
And then, we, if, if, in the documentation, we're eligible for continued renewal.
Okay.
And so, and it's our, and it's our plan to renew.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other administrative reports? Okay, then moving on.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you very much. Moving on, there were, there was no one signed up for the non-agenda-related public forum or the agenda-related public forum. However, we did get a request by a student and student learning is really the center of what we do. So, we gave permission for a student to share a project that she developed this year through her English class. So, Mrs. Carlin, do you want to introduce our, our guest student today?
Sure, Katie, if you want to come on up. So, this is Katie Schneider and you are a West High School student. And you were working on this project with your teacher, what is her name, Mrs. Griffith, your English teacher? Okay. So.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you for coming, thank you for reaching out. And take a deep breath, it's okay, don't be nervous.
Okay. So, throughout this semester, I kind of started on financial part of schools and how that's a big problem that schools face in America nationwide, it's not just the Ashkosh School District, it's not just Wisconsin, it's every state. And so, through that, I kind of got to like, well, what's kind of the root problem? And so, one of the problems is the way the school system is set up. So, I actually graduated.
Congratulations.
Thanks. So, I've, I've been here for K through twelve for the Ashkosh School District. And so, I've seen a lot and I hear a lot of kids compare school to prison. And schools should not be compared to prison, okay? Prison is for people that have done something wrong. School is a place to learn, to grow, to be creative, to find yourself, to like, be individual. And so, I think that there, there's a Finnish model, like Finland's school model. And they value their students. And so, they have a setup, so they focus on the individual. And there's an article entitled, "What the Best Education Systems Are Doing Right." So, Finland has a short school day, rich with school-sponsored extracurriculars because Finns believe important learning happens outside the classroom. So, I feel like our school system does not, as like a K-12, does not focus so much on its students as individuals. And I think that that's one of the key parts of where like, the school system is suffering. And I think if we focused more on the individual, our school system would thrive. And there's a TED Talk by Sarah Ken Robinson, he talks, it's like, called, "How to Escape Education's Death Valley." And so, he compares the school system to death valley. So, given the proper conditions, it will thrive. And so, I think that same, that ideology applies to our school system. And so, I think that we could follow or replicate Finland's school system. I know it's not going to be the same because America's not the same as Finland. But Wisconsin and Finland both have a population of five point five million people. So, I believe that population-wise and geographical-wise, we're the same. We could definitely take some things from them and focus. And I think that the Ashkosh School District has amazing teachers. I've had amazing teachers throughout my career, so I don't think it's the teachers. I just think that like, if we focused more, like I said, on the individual, then we would see results. We can't treat a school system like everyone is the same because we are not all the same. And so, this past semester, I took the dual-credit CAP class with Mr. Steiner. And we have, we met on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Tuesday and Thursday, we had off and we were able to go see him if we needed help, whenever that may be. We were able to go see another teacher at an open hour. Or we just had an open hour to do any homework we had. Because going to school seven hours a day, then being involved in sports or drama club or having a job takes a lot of time. And then, you still have homework on top of that. So, what I think our school system needs to do is to kind of replicate Mr. Steiner's class. And so, how to follow a college schedule and not be in school for seven hours a day. And have time to like, teach kids to be creative and not just learn to replicate information and learn it for the test and then forget it and then learn more information for the test. Because that's not the reason you take classes, to forget information. You want to retain all of this information. So, I just think that as a school district, it's very important that we focus on our students. And so, I think that if we reconstructed our school system, it would really improve our stats and just student learning in general. So, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, was there anything else you wanted to share? I thought you had a few more points you wanted to share tonight.
That was, that was mainly the big points to get through.
Well, thank you so much for coming. And I believe Mr. Peschler would like to weigh in here.
Thank you for making this presentation. It was wonderful to hear a recent graduate, graduate talking about different education, educational models that exist. Not, you know, not necessarily around here, but, you know, overseas and bringing those to us. So, that's great. I know that we're familiar, we've, we've talked about that, that model already. So, so it's really good, I know that we're fans of it, so. The only thing that I really wanted to get from you is I didn't catch the class, Mr. Steiner's class, who I took as a senior. So, what was the name of that class again?
It's the CAP Dual-Credit English Class.
Okay.
So, I think it's English one-on-one, I could be wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What is it that you would like for the board to do? Is there any kind of actions that, that you, if you could make it happen, that you would have us do?
I think if we just like, so let's just start with West and like, high schoolers. And you can just start with juniors and seniors because they have more freedom in their schedule already and they have time like, they have, most likely, they have driver's license, so it's easier to like, get off campus. And so, I think if you just focus more, kind of like I said with Mr. Steiner's, and you took classes and like, didn't make them fifty minutes each day and like, had time, so the kid or student has time to go talk to that teacher.
Okay.
You know, so if they have full schedule, it's hard to do.
Yep. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and congratulations on your graduation.
Thank you.
And Katie, also, thank you for coming tonight. I wish that our board members, Steve Eliason, would be able to make it tonight. Because I think that he really, really would have enjoyed this as well. And just, thank you for approaching us and coming to talk to us. I love it when our students get engaged.
Are you eighteen yet?
Yeah.
Can she run for the board?
She could.
It's one of the coolest boards in Ashkosh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Good, best wishes.
Katie did her research and interviewed me and as part of the, her project. And it was delightful, I was really impressed with the research she had done for our discussions. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thanks again. Okay, then I guess we will be moving into our workshop part of the, the meeting of which we have three this evening, beginning with the Rise Up update with Dr. Kimmer.
And others. Alright, good evening. So, we are here tonight to present on our Rise Up Mental Health Framework. This year was the first year of our Rise Up program. So, our, the purpose of our presentation is twofold. We want to give you an update on some of the things we've accomplished this year with Rise Up. And we also want to provide an overview for anybody out there who doesn't really know a whole lot about the program as of yet. So, before we get into that, I want to give my, my guest a chance to introduce himself.
Sure, I'm Jen Parsons with Samaritan Counseling Center and I am the Wellness Screen Program Director.
I am Rachel Mailey, I'm at Ashkosh West High School as an English teacher. And I'm also an adult advisor for the Sources of Strength program there.
I'm Katie Jensen and the Director of Access and Outreach at Catelpa Health.
Alright, so to get into our overview, our Rise Up framework is really constructed or comprised of three main areas. So, the first area is education for students and staff on, on mental health issues or things related to mental health. The second area is student identification and that's really where the screening portion of Rise Up comes into play. And then, the final area is direct services. And part of our direct services is the clinical therapy provided by Catelpa Health. So, we'll get into each of these areas in much more detail. But, as I've been talking about Rise Up with, with different people and organizations in the community, one of the questions I'm frequently asked is, is do you have some sort of visual that, that, that we could see that would really help us conceptualize what this program all includes? Because there are a lot of pieces to it. So, we created this, which is called a multi-level system of support. And it's a visual that's pretty common in education, you may have seen it used with our PBIS program. It's also used with response to intervention. And the State of Wisconsin Mental Health Model is also based on a multi-level system of support. So, this is our multi-level system of support. And really, what this shows is the level of support provided to students who have different needs in the district. So, the green or the universal level. Research shows that about eighty-five percent of students will have their needs met through what's offered at, at the universal level. So, for us, when, as it relates to mental health, we do things like we educate our students at the elementary level through our elementary guidance lessons. At the middle school and high school level, that's primarily provided through our health curriculum. We're going to talk a little bit about Sources of Strength, some of the community partner presentations that, that are provided through Reach Counseling and Kristin Mann. We have DARE at the elementary level, PBIS and Conscious Discipline. So, these are things that if they're provided in the school, they're provided for all students. So, inevitably, there's going to be about fifteen percent of students who have needs that go beyond what can be met at the universal level. So, for those students, we have supports that are provided at the selective level. So, check-in and check-out, that's one of our PBIS Tier Two interventions for students. We provide social skills groups, those are primarily at the elementary level. But we have other small groups and individual counseling at all levels. And then, finally, with our Rise Up screening, there's a, a follow-up component for students who screen positive. And we'll get into that here shortly as well. And then, there, there will still be about two to three percent of students who have needs that go beyond even what can be met at the selective level. And for those students, that's where our, our clinical therapy through Catelpa Health comes into play. We also have something called the Encompass Program for some of our special education students who have significant mental health needs. And then, finally, for a lot of our students, we refer them out to community providers who really can do a better job of meeting their mental health needs than what we can do at school. So, in terms of education, like I mentioned, we, at the elementary level, we primarily educate through our elementary school guidance curriculum. But in terms of things we're, we're working on right now, we're in the midst of a health curriculum audit. So, Julie is leading that up and really just taking a closer look at all things in our health curriculum. But in particular, how we're educating students on mental health and if there are any areas that we need to improve or add into that. Along with that, we created a continuum of support. Of course, it's not coming out now. It's in log in this killing. But basically, what, what the staff continuum, multi-level system of support does is it provides an outline for how we educate our staff on mental health issues. So, it breaks it down by trainings provided to all staff. So, every year, we train all of our staff on QPR, which is Question Persuade Refer, which looks at signs and symptoms of, of students maybe contemplating suicide. We also provide de-escalation training for all of our staff. And then, new this year was our Trauma-Informed Care Initiative. So, we also have trainings that are provided to staff at specific schools. So, some of our schools are big in a conscious discipline, so that would be universal in that, in those buildings. We have trainings that are provided to staff members who are interested. So, in this district, we provide youth mental health first aid training to anyone who wants to take it. And that's offered to anyone in the community who wants to take it as well. In addition to that, we have SAFE training, which is, which touches on some LGBTQ issues and a number of others. It also talks about trainings that are specific to groups of individuals. So, for instance, our pupil service staff is all trained on Prepare Two, which is a, a mental health crisis response model or framework. Really tells our counselors, our school psychologists, our social workers, how they can respond and when they're responding to a crisis in one of our buildings. And then, like I mentioned, we have trainings available to individuals who are interested in the community. So, youth mental health first aid is offered several times a year, QPR. We also offer Love and Logic to anyone who's interested and that's usually done once or twice a year as well. And then, finally, Sources of Strength is another way that we've started to educate students. And this is something that I'm really excited about. I've talked to a number of people in the community who are also really excited and getting behind this. But what Sources of Strength is, it's a peer-led initiative that serves the purpose of educating students from the ground up. You know, we talked a lot about our health curriculum and our elementary guidance lessons. And like most things in education, it comes top-down. So, we're delivering that education to the students. And this is a way for, for students to educate their peers on an issue that touches all of them in some way. So, Sources of Strength uses social network theory. So, what we do is we look for students who are natural leaders from a number of different peer groups. So, we're not just seeking out our student council kids or our leadership kids. We're looking for kids from, you know, any peer group, all peer groups. So, it could be some of our athletes, it could be students in FFA, it could be someone who's not really involved in anything at all. But in addition to trying to cast, cast a wide net to get as many different students as we can from different peer groups, we're looking for something called bridge students. So, bridge students are kids who can easily move from one peer group to the next. And we figured those students are really going to be the most impactful in terms of delivering the message to the most possible students within their school. So, Sources of Strength was originally built and created as a suicide prevention program, but really, it's so much more than that. And as you'll hear about, some of the campaigns that we run really do more than, than touch on suicide. So, they, they do things like talk about trusted adults, really focusing on resiliency factors. So, what are strengths within individual students' lives that they can rely on to really, you know, be more solid and, and, and address some of the things that they're facing, whether it be related to mental health or other issues. So, with that, this was our Peer Leader Training that took place in November for West High School. And Rachel is one of our, our West High School Adult Advisors. So, she's going to tell you a little bit more about Sources of Strength from her perspective.
Alright, so earlier this year, we went through a full day of training with students and staff, the adult advisors and the peer students that were a part of the group. We actually had a full group at West, I think it was up to like seventy-five students. So, we had, we maxed out our people that were able to participate in it. Following our training, we started off, we kicked off Sources of Strength at West with the Positive Peer Week. So, this is an entire week where the students both celebrated positive peers that they knew and then also took this as an opportunity to promote Sources of Strength and explain to students and staff what it was. I think this was very beneficial at West because students started, it really got the momentum going. So, things were kind of, I don't know, it got things rolling. So, so that acknowledged, there's different sections on the Sources of Strength wheel and one of them is positive peers. So, this acknowledged positive peers in other people's lives. And I think it built momentum for future campaigns at West. We also did a Positive Mentors Week or a few days at West as well to end the school year. And this was used to acknowledge adults at West that were trusted by other students and therefore, they could promote trust within students who didn't know someone to go to. So, having that there also promoted that. The number one thing that I saw come out of this this year, other than the momentum that I see going for into next year, was that students were more likely to express gratitude towards people. We did a big thing where each, for each campaign, we wrote letters to, the students wrote letters to either staff members, so their positive mentors, or other students, just as a way of expressing like, a thanks, like, you're a positive peer here or thank you for being a positive mentor towards me. And that's something I feel like even without the weeks that we had, the promotions going on, students continue to do. I know I continue to receive letters from students either anonymously or with their names signed, just, you know, expressing that gratitude. So, that's something I thought was very positive that came out of Sources of Strength so far this year. I also think it began to form a sense of community within students. While there are, there are peer leaders, it was really for everyone at school. It gives other individuals someone to go to, someone to look to if they, if they need more direction or more source of help. And I think that really took and started forming this community at West that I see continuing throughout the next few school years. So, I think the momentum's really going for next year and I think it's going to be a very positive thing and has been so far.
I think one of the other big things that Sources of Strength does that is really important for our entire initiative is it reduces the stigma around mental health for students in our school. So, hopefully, we're going to have more students talking about mental health and really understanding that there are supports available to them. So, ultimately, I, we're hoping that there's a greater likelihood that they're going to seek out the supports that are available to them in school or outside of school. So, here's a picture of our, our North crew. We had hoped one of our North advisors could be here tonight, but it's a busy week for vacation, so. But they had a lot of positive things to say about what they experienced with Sources this year as well. So, next steps for Sources of Strength, we have our, our Adult Advisor Training scheduled for August thirtieth. So, that's where our, our Adult Advisors from both North and West come together, as well as any other administrator or staff member who's interested in learning more about the program. And then, that's followed up with our, our West Peer Leader Training on September twenty-seventh and our North Peer Leader Training on September twenty-eighth. So, I had mentioned that there are community members and organizations that are really excited about this as well. So, I've, I've began, began having conversations with some community organizations that are stakeholders related to mental health about possibly sponsoring some of our campaigns next year. So, that is something that I, I heard a lot of interest about doing. So, I, I think we're going to explore that just to help support the program as, as we continue before. Because there's a small cost associated with it.
One of the things that I think deserves attention and Matt learned of this from other districts that we were looking at is the fact that part of the adult peers to be recruited from non-traditional care, healthcare providers, that they didn't come as counselors and psychologists or social workers, but having teachers such as our, our teacher here this evening, being willing to step into that role and kind of go outside their normal, their normal interaction. And my compliments to the strong and brave teachers that have stepped forward to, or willing to be those, those adult mentors in this program because that makes all the difference. Because then it doesn't typecast the entire issue of only being health and mental health care providers. And it is, it was strongly encouraged and Matt worked hard to recruit, but found wonderful volunteers who were willing to step forward and take on that extra role. And I think that's just a marvelous way of kind of demystifying and de-stigmatizing that we're all responsible for sharing and helping each other's mental health.
Good point, yeah. So, the next portion that we're going to discuss is the Universal Screening. And Jen's going to tell you a little bit more about that.
Yes, so, within the Rise Up program, we have been able to kind of switch our model of screening from that active consent model where parents were, you know, filling out their consent form, turning it into our program and then being administered the screen. So, we're switching to a passive consent model, which is universally offered to all students, ninth through twelfth grade at both of the high schools this year. We, you know, found out about the grant halfway through the summer and really made it happen. And we were able to get through all of those students this year. So, we started our fall semester screening those juniors and seniors to make sure that we got those upperclassmen in before they had early graduation potentially. But we also wanted more time to connect them. Our spring semester, we finished with our freshman and sophomore classes. So, again, just a reminder what that Universal Screening looks like and what that involves is it's voluntary, it's free, and it's confidential for all students. We do, in the Universal Screening process, offer three notices to parents in advance of screening being offered in the classroom. So, they're notified via paper, that comes right in the mail to their home. And then, we do give two electronic reminders so that they do have an opportunity to opt their student out of that screening process if they'd like to. I think we had about twelve percent parent opt-out rate this year, which is what we do see in a lot of our other districts offering Universal Screening, so that's pretty typical. We do offer that individual follow-up as Matt spoke about. We do interview each student that indicates that they have a concern or a potential concern within the screening process. So, we do interview each student and talk with them. And then, we have that contact with parents to relay those recommendations and results of the screen. And then, our team does provide that ongoing case management service to ensure that they are successfully connected to a resource that they may need. We do offer those referrals internally with school counselors or school staff as well as external. So, whether our recommendation is a further evaluation on their mental health, it could be to start with a pediatrician if there's a health-related concern that's causing some of those mental health concerns. But that's what that internal, external means for students that are struggling. In year one, we've offered screening to two thousand five hundred and eighty-six students, which is ninety-two percent of those enrolled at North and West, which is amazing. Since last year, we were really only able to offer to twenty percent. So, kudos, it's just wonderful that we were able to do that with your support. So, again, twelve percent of your parents were opting out of that process and we hope to continue to educate them on the importance and advocate for annual screening. Nineteen percent of your students are refusing that process in the classroom. And so, we're always going to be, again, I think with annual screening, we'll see that number decline as, as they're presented with Sources of Strength. I think in combination with school collaboration, we'll hope to see that decrease as well. The positive screen rate, so the number of students that are identified within the screening process is about forty percent. And that's a little, a little bit higher than what we, we have seen in the past. So, I think it's the year one, also, casting a wider net of a, a larger population has something to do with that as well as that being a, a positive as well, that we're able to identify those students and get them to the resources that they need. Our summer work consists of more and more case management, so we've never stopped working on those case management responsibilities. So, a lot of that turns to me in the summer. We have a small amount of staff during our summer months. So, I'm working with a lot of your families on getting those things happening for their students before the start of next school year. I think we have about thirty-eight percent of your families still in the process of case management. So, there's still a large number of students that we're connecting, so that's our portion.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
In the visual that you made with the universal, you said that it, it'll address about eighty-five percent of the kids' needs. And that seems like a big discrepancy with the forty percent. So, I was just asking, going to ask like, what do you guys think that is?
Right, so keep in mind, not all of the forty percent who screen positive need additional support. So, that's where that follow-up interview comes in.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, and that is accurate. You know, we have, our screening tool picks up those students that have possible emotional health concern. And so, once they meet with us, it could be related to a Spanish test that's really throwing them, you know, for a loop. And so, we discuss that and we may refer them just to their school counselor for some additional support until that class is over.
So, that the eighty-five is still a solid number?
You know, I think we typically would see of, you know, of the total population that we would screen, your typical positive screen rate are those students that are identified is probably more likely to be twenty-five percent.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
And I think that that will slowly decrease over time.
Nationally, we know it's real high.
Yeah.
We know it's over fifteen. We know it's over 15 at least. And then the other question is, over time, have you seen that that number's going up, going down, staying the same?
We should, over time. I mean, answering briefly.
I mean, from like five to 10 years ago to today, is the trend, what are you guys seeing as the trend?
You know.
You mean with the wellness screen itself?
No, with the amount of kids that need additional services other than the universal ones.
It's so hard to say.
Yeah. And we're on track, maybe.
As we continue to reduce stigma, I think more and more students are gonna, you know, be identified as in need of support. You know, and really, mental health services are relatively new to schools. I mean, other than school counselors and school social workers, psychologists, which have been around for a while, site-based services, you know, have only been around for, you know, less than a decade. And in some schools, we're fortunate in that we've had a Cattelpa Health and a Samaritan counseling partner with us, and, you know, we've had them in the district for a number of years now, but most districts don't have that luxury. So it's difficult to say for sure.
Okay. We've seen that percentage in other districts where we've offered annual screenings universally. We have seen that number decrease of the percentage of those that are identified with those emotional health concerns.
Yep.
And most of that is due to education surrounding mental health in the schools and dropping that stigma. And so we're noticing that most of our flagged students in those districts are already connected to services. And, you know, they're getting to treatment before they even are screened because they aren't afraid of doing that, so.
Yeah. And probably the best longitudinal indicator that we have is our YRBS, our Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And that's done every two years, and I'm gonna get into that data in a few slides here.
All right, thank you.
All right. Katie's gonna talk about the Cattelpa therapy.
Yeah, so as we had discussed when we were the host program here in Oshkosh, we were in Webster Stanley and then North and Washington. And then this year, we expanded to West High School. And then in December, we went to Reed for a day. And you'd never know they were new schools, because if you look at the data, they all filled up really fast. So it was a very well-utilized program. We were able to keep the waitlist down pretty low in all the schools, and partly due to the schools really just being cooperative and saying, "Yeah, if you need to go there, go there, come back here when, you know, when the need is here." And Reed Elementary was the one day, and there was a specific need for that, but again, well-utilized, very collaborative relationship between the therapist and the school counselor and the principal, so it worked out very well. All of our sites are state-certified, and we do that so we can move within them. So as long as it's state-certified, you know, if we have a half-day that maybe we're not filling up as much in one of the schools, we're gonna put it in a school that's starting to get a lot more demand. It also allows us to bill for all insurances, and that's another reason why we're able to have our numbers higher than previously. When we ran the host program, we changed that model, so all students are able to get services. It doesn't have to go through a certain filter process, for instance. So anybody is welcomed. And then all of our, you know, our therapists are licensed as well, so we can bill. And so for, through, this is through May, we do still see some kids at North High School and the kids from West High, so at North High School, any kids are welcome to come there. So a lot of the kids on the north side, so at Reed and Washington, are welcome to come to North High School if that's more convenient for them. The therapist that is continuing to provide the services in our clinic, our clinic is on the west side, so any of the kids at West High School are just coming to the clinic because it's not from their houses, it's not too much of a distance. So this number rolled out, but this is through May. So 132 students were seen and 1,418 therapy sessions were completed, so. And this is just kind of reiterating, just with flexible schedules, I know when we first started at West, it was two full days, and so it always takes a while to get the word out. And so there's a half-day that we brought to North, and then we worked with North to make sure we didn't have a waitlist. And then North stabilized, and the referrals slowed down a little bit, but then Reed had a waitlist, so we took that half-day and went to Reed. And so that therapist just kept jumping around, but the kids were able to be seen, so they just really didn't have to wait very long.
All right. So in terms of program indicators, the things that we're looking at to gauge the effectiveness of Rise Up, there are a number of different pieces that we track. So the first is a literacy survey. So this is a survey we did for the first time this year with all high school students, parents, and staff members. And this is just taking a look at their overall knowledge and perceptions related to mental health. So it was between 29 and 34 questions, so not real long. And it touched on a variety of things, and like I said, this year was really our baseline year. So the intent of this survey is, the hope is, over time, we're really gonna be educating our students, staff, and parents on issues related to mental health. So when we present around this time next year, we're gonna be able to do a comparison, comparative analysis, and look at the growth that we've had from year one to year two and eventually year three, to really give us a better indication about how well we're doing in that area. One of the other key indicators we're looking at is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, like I've mentioned. This is a survey that's done every two years, and it really takes a look at risk factors that our students are demonstrating. It's done at both the middle school and the high school level. And for this program in particular, there are two questions on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey that we're really using and closely monitoring. The first asks students if they've felt so sad or hopeless for two or more consecutive weeks that they've stopped doing usual activities, which really focuses in on severe depression. And back in 2016, before Rise Up, we had 29.4% of our high school students indicate that was the case for them. More than that, if you go back and look at the data from 2014 and 2012, we were trending up each year. So 29.4% was the peak that we reached. And thankfully, just looking at the preliminary data from 2018, we've already stopped that trend. So for this YRBS cycle, we're at 27.7%. So our goal for the next round in 2020 is to be below 24%, which aligns a lot more closely with state and national averages. The other question that we look closely at asks students if they've made one or more suicide attempts in the past. And our data in this area has been staggering. Again, going back and looking at 2012, we've been gradually trending up in this area, and we're at 13.5% for high school students in 2016. And again, we've stopped that trend for 2018, at least we're at 10.4%. Our 2020 goal is to get below 6%. Again, that aligns better with state and national averages, even a little bit below state and national averages, but that's an area that we really wanna see some movement in. And then finally, we're looking at other data points, just our district data, so office discipline referrals, suspensions, expulsions, that type of thing. And that's really gonna help us get an idea of whether or not the program itself is having an impact on student behaviors. So when we look at our multi-level system of support, that is by no means a finished project. So there are areas where we have gaps within that multi-level system of support, and we're constantly looking to fill those gaps and improve on the things that are already within that multi-level system of support. So for next year, some things that are on the horizon, we're looking to expand our universal screen to eighth grade. And based on, you know, the capacity that Jen feels like Samaritan had, this year, if we are a little bit more efficient next year, we could do that within the scope of the staffing that we already have in place through Samaritan. We're also looking at developing a student assistance program, and this is something that would target students who are impacted by substance use and abuse. So either they directly use or they are impacted by maybe a family member who uses. So this is being funded through Title 4A. Title 4A has had not been well-funded in the past. Recently, the federal government started allocating more money toward Title 4A. So this was one area where we definitely knew we had some needs, and it was an opportunity for us to address it. So we have four school staff members currently being trained right now through Cindy Zarnik-Neymeyer at Cattelpa Health in Appleton on SAP program. There's a second training that is a group facilitator training that really gives them an idea of how to run those groups, and that's gonna be held during the year. So the hope is, by the end of the year, we'll have SAP groups running at both high schools and our Second Chance Program and possibly some of our other alternative programs. We've also applied for a school-based mental health services grant, and this would expand the site-based services that we already have in place, but it would take a little bit different of an approach. Right now, when we have Cattelpa therapists come in to our schools, they're doing one-on-one individual therapy. What we're looking at, or what we propose through our grant, is to have them take on more of a consultative role. And we'd be targeting some of our self-contained programs. So we'd be looking at Merrill Elementary School, Merrill Middle School. Both of those schools have a self-contained DVD program, but they also have an Encompass program. And then we'd be looking at Traeger Elementary and Traeger Middle. So Traeger Elementary has a self-contained DVD program. At the middle school, they have the Rise program for our students with autism. But, you know, one thing that we'd really like to do is bring down the seclusion and restraints in our self-contained programs and make sure that we don't have staff members in those programs being injured by students. So the hope is that by having a clinical therapist consulting with our teachers on students who have mental health issues in those classrooms, that we can come up with a different approach to take with them that might reduce what we're seeing in those areas. And in addition to that consultative piece, they're going to be, the clinical therapist is going to do some wellness support for our teachers in those classrooms. We know that those jobs are extremely stressful, and just making sure that those teachers are taking care of themselves and we're providing support to them in that way. But we're also hoping then to run parent support groups for parents who have students with mental health concerns in those buildings. So we're hoping by taking that three-pronged approach that we're overall gonna bring student behaviors down across the board in those programs. We're gonna continue to offer opportunities for our staff to build capacity, whether it be in trauma and fortum care, youth mental health, first aid, QPR, or other trainings offered by the district. And then finally, thanks to some efficiencies that we've created in our staffing process, we're hopefully gonna have some resources that we can allocate to our elementary schools for the first time to address some of the significant behaviors that we're seeing. We know that really intervention is the most effective way to target behaviors, and you'll be hearing in future board meetings about some of the ways we're looking to target those behaviors at the elementary level.
Again, in the interest of openness and transparency, my understanding is the board will be asked to vote on that last point next, at the next meeting. So there will not be new dollars. These will be dollars that will have been saved due to other staffing efficiencies, correct?
Yes, you are correct. And right now, you know, we've had conversations about what's the best approach to take, because the funding that we saved isn't gonna allow us to put a new staff member in every one of our elementary schools. So we want something that is gonna be impactful for all of our schools and not isolate those resources. So we've experienced some success with the behavioral interventionists that we have in the district, but right now, we only have two of them. So they're spread very thin. And one of the things that we're looking closely at is expanding that to get more behavioral interventionists in place, so they can focus more of their attention to fewer schools, hopefully be more impactful, and can expand their role then as well. So that's it. Any questions?
I would just like to add a comment to the fact that having these partnerships with staff from other agencies coming into our schools was, five, six years ago, was a little bit traumatic for some of our staff. And the reality is that the professionalism of the individuals who are working with our students and working with our staff is so positive and so standing that that whole issue of anxiety regarding outside agencies coming in, working with our staff, has disappeared. And I generally judge things based on emails and phone calls, and this program has done so well that there's not been a single email that's negative and not a single phone call. And knowing that we are responding back as we need to in these areas, but still, we could certainly use more resources and more service, but we are bringing about more changes. I think Allison's question was a good one in the fact that we don't really know, but we have every reason to speculate that the needs 10 years ago were as great or greater, but there was no way of even measuring that because we had no one there to deal with it, and it really wasn't being spoken of in schools. And that's really the reality, is it was a tremendous unmet need that was there. But to say that there's more today, we can't really say that. We can say that we weren't responding to a need 10 years ago that we really didn't define. And I think that's really significant in that, and that this is not new and different. It is, we're finally coming to terms with the needs in mental health for children in our schools.
Well stated.
I have a few questions. I completed the QPR training, which I highly recommend. I thought it was fantastic. And in that training, they provided a text number, so if a student was contemplating suicide and needed to reach out, they could text what number again to get immediate assistance? Do you guys happen to recall what that number was?
The hole line, maybe?
I think so. Was it like 711 or something?
It's just typed up on our safety plan, so I'm sorry to remember, but I'm pretty sure it's not the hole line.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, I thought that was really great, because it's a real thing. If you are in crisis, you can text this and somebody will get back to you. I thought that was fantastic. I also had a question. If somebody wanted to be a community partner with the Peer Sources of Strength, who would they contact?
I would be the contact for that.
You would be, okay.
Yep.
And then if someone wanted to get involved in the Sources of Strength training on August 30th, would you also be the contact for that?
I would be, yes.
Okay. And then also, lastly, I was wondering if you could share with us what you're doing with NAMI, because I know the district has been interacting with them a little bit.
Yeah, so I've had some conversations with Mary from NAMI. She's come to our mental health advisory committee meeting, and, you know, they're looking to get more involved in the schools, which is something we're definitely
Great.
open to and welcoming. So I think we're gonna continue to have more dialogue going into next year. I know I got an email from her saying that they wanna provide more support in the form of educating students, which I think would be great, and that's a role that they take on for some of our schools in the Fox Cities. So I think there'll be more on that front relatively soon.
I'm sure you will be hearing from her, because NAMI was awarded a grant last evening by the Women Who Care Group.
Great.
And she noted that they wanted to bring in a speaker, at least to speak with, I believe, high school students, perhaps middle school students. So given that she received a grant last evening from that particular group, which is an offshoot of the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, I'm sure she will be in touch with you.
And just for those who are unaware, what does NAMI stand for again? National Alliance of Mental Vitalness? Okay.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Are there any other board questions or comments at this time? We really thank you and appreciate all you're doing to help our students. This is a really significant area, not only in this community, but across the country, and it's not only in the schools, it's out there, outside the school walls. So we appreciate all you're doing to help our students so that they and their parents can be more successful. So thank you for all you're doing. Next up, we have the AGR workshop. All right, Kim Brown and?
Kristy Levy, principal at Washington.
And we were hoping to have all of the principals here tonight to present. However, we have one who's on maternity leave, and the other one is at a workshop, and another one is gone with family. So here we are. All right. So just a reminder, the AGR is Achievement Gap Reduction, and we have four schools who are part of this. And basically, we ask for, or the AGR rules is we have to have class sizes of 18 to 1 or 30 to 2. We are utilizing the 18 to 1 in the Oshkosh Area School District, and then professional development related to small group instruction. This year, we had tutoring one-on-one at Roosevelt. We tried that out. And then all of them have data-driven instructional coaching for teachers. The four schools that are AGR schools are Jefferson, Roosevelt, Washington, and Webster Stanley Elementary School. And we're just gonna go right into what each school was And we're just going to go right into what each school was doing, and, and then we'll go from there. So, at Jefferson, their, their literacy goal was given an unfamiliar level text using DRA 2. The student had to read at an instructional level above the, what our guidelines have, and they wanted 85% of students to meet that performance standard. At the end of this last year, when they measured that, they had 75% of the students who met And they have a very long list of action steps that they have done, so I'm not going to read all of those, but I will share this with the board. So, if you want to take a deeper dive to see what they've all done, but they talked about some of the pieces that they've done for this social-emotional learning and family engagement, and those are things that a lot of our schools are doing, getting families involved and, you know, incorporating trauma-informed care, conscious discipline, and some of those pieces. And then the next piece is around academics. And again, you know, they, they spent some time on the RTI process with their staff. They established a math resource library for staff to have resources available for differentiation. They expanded their guided reading library, which was a really nice celebration for them. The collaboration with the Math IST and the Math, well, and Literacy IST in order to help them move forward. They did use DreamBox subscription, which is an online adaptive learning math program. And then, all the kids had the iPads, but those were there too. And then, of course, the Take Home Games. And then their professional development and collaboration, the staff came together and they decided that they were going to be focusing on Danielson Domains 1B, Demonstrating Knowledge of Students, 2A, Creating Environment of Respect and Rport, and 3A, Communicating with Students, and 3C, Engaging Students in Learning. A very key one. So, again, looking at universal pieces, their monthly meetings, examples of thinking among the staff, collaboration around thinking journals. The Thinking Journals was a very big piece this year across all of our elementary schools as we were trying to go deeper with our understanding. And then again, it goes on, but the, the pieces I was going to mention is the coaching and whole staff development by the Math and Literacy ISTs. That was really key in helping move them forward. Yeah. All right. And then Roosevelt. Their school goal is going to look very similar. They had 85% of students that were assessed and 85% of students wanting to make one year's growth in writing around elaboration. That is a piece that Julie and I had talked to schools about too, is having on it to it, because we noticed that when the, the right, our, the writing piece is really giving us a strong statement of how we do on our standard, our state assessments, and so we wanted to see where students were with that. And then, we have our math goals as well. And so, at kindergarten, their focus was on forward number word sequence. In first grade, it was on addition and subtraction. Second grade was on structuring. Third grade was on place value. Fourth grade, multiplication and division and place value, and then same with fifth So, this is, they just wanted to share with you how they're monitoring students, and what they really wanted you to know is that, you know, AGR is really for kindergarten through third grade, but they are monitoring data of all of their students, and they're looking to see, you know, are they, are they getting to a universal level? Are they below benchmark? Are they in need of support? And so, they have several different charts that they're keeping track of that throughout the year in order to help move them forward. So, this is example how they progress that, progress monitor that, but every school does that a little bit different. And then their collaboration strategies are here. We had shared with you at the beginning of year about a profile of practice and meaning, what are we going to focus in on as adults? And so, they did that activity with their staff, with literacy and with math. They analyzed their assessment data to plan for student growth, and then conversations around student data. The different piece that Roosevelt did a little bit different this year is the IST, math and literacy really work together quite a bit. And so, every time they met, the two of them met together to try to bring literacy and math goals together about how you can move forward, and they helped teachers coach. So, they both sometimes went in to coach, even though it might be literacy or math, but it was really to move that forward, and that was really successful at Roosevelt. And then, the tutoring one-on-one at Roosevelt in third grade, there was four students who received one-on-one tutoring, 30 minutes for three days a week, and all four students grew in their DRA reading level. In math, eight students received one-to-one tutoring, and all of them grew in their conceptual understanding of math. The key piece they wanted to share on this is that it was really difficult this year for scheduling. So, the tutoring was great, the, the people who were doing the coaching was really good, but sometimes because of, you know, trying to schedule somebody who's only working point two or point three in a building, they come in, and it might be during a literacy block or a math block, and so you might be pulling from universal pieces, and that was not comfortable. And we think there would have been greater growth if that would not have been an issue. So, this next year, we are not doing one-to-one tutoring at Roosevelt. We are going back to the 18 to 1 class size, because they did this in lieu of having 20 or 21 students in their classrooms.
Even though they saw the growth?
There was growth, but there was growth in the other classrooms as well. But, they were concerned about pulling kids from universal instruction, because when kids are pulled from universal instruction, we don't make as great of growth.
Was there a way to do that? Because I would imagine that one-to-one tutoring, you're always going to see significant growth.
Yes.
So, if it's a scheduling issue, is there a way to overcome that? I mean, I imagine they try.
Well, because it's a teacher who's traveling. So, one of the teachers was traveling from Lakeside every day, and so they're, they're with Lakeside students. So, you can't run back and forth between Lakeside and Roosevelt several times a day in order to be accommodating to when it would be the best time for individual students. So, that was, that was a major issue.
One would be the best time for the students to do, what, what would be the ideal time to pull that student to get that one-on-one time? What would they?
So, if it was during literacy, if they already had their guided reading time, and they, did I mean, they made another round where they got to do some practice reading, but then the third time might be time with a tutor, that would probably be ideal.
Got it. Okay.
It's either one-to-one, or it's reduced class size, or it's not?
Correct. You can't, yeah.
One or the other.
We can't afford to do both, but that would be lovely as well. And it so happened that it worked out last year, we were able to, it was worth a try last year, because when we looked at our staffing as far as FTE, we could have had two, two classrooms, but the classrooms would have been so small that it was, it worked at like two classrooms of 10 students at the beginning of the year, which that could go down or maybe up one or two, but, so that's where we decided, let's put them together and let's try this option out. I don't know. We could try the option again in the future, but it really has to work out FTE-wise as well.
Is there any reduction in FTE in the AGR schools?
Not this year.
Is there any reduction in FTE in any of the other elementary schools, where we could steal an FTE? Can you steal an FTE from a non-AGR and use it at an AGR?
We, when we, we did our staffing this year and everything came out, like, we did not have an increase or decrease in staffing. We, we maintained steady, so there was no options to play.
Keep trying.
I know. Thank you.
So, Washington had a similar school goal to the others that you saw already. Our school goal was 85% of all students would be reading at or above grade level based on the DRA 2. So, we started our year knowing that our school data did not look the way that we wanted it to look. And so, with me being new to the building and knowing what our data looked like coming into the fall, we really set the stage at the beginning of the school year and prepared as a staff to be willing to have courageous conversations. And I think that laid the foundation for our work this year. We had to come to a shared understanding that we need to do right, not be right. And so, we needed to be open to the coaching, and we needed to be open to looking at our practices from a different perspective and recognize that we needed to do more work than what we had been doing and perhaps different work in some areas. After we had that discussion as a staff, we analyzed student data in order to understand students as readers beyond their numbers. So, when you look at a student's DRA score, you see a number. We sat down and spent some time early in the year as a staff with the support of our instructional coaches, looking at the results of those student assessments and trying to get past that number to say, where are students struggling and what are the problems of practice indicated by that? So, when we put together groupings of students, we could be really intentional about it and not group students by their DRA score, but rather group them based on what their specific instructional needs were. While we were doing that in the classroom setting, teachers during collaboration time were working in instructional focus groups. So, in one of our early collaborations, we sat down as a staff and we brainstormed and said, what are things that we could start doing tomorrow? What are things that we could be doing by semester? And what are things that we hope to be doing by the end of the school year? And we gathered all of those ideas. So, there was dozens in each category. And then, my IST team spent the next week and a half digging through all of those suggestions that are, came directly from our teachers, and they started aligning with, what does the research tell us? So, rather than just taking a list that we compiled in that collaboration, we had to look at what research tells us about which of those suggestions were going to help us see the most gains over the course of a year. And so, through doing that, we were able to narrow that down to four instructional focus groups. And then, teachers were able to self-select which group they were going to be part of, and they stayed part of that group for the duration of the school year. And so, the expectation as part of that was that they would spend some time doing research and development. They would read the research. They would find suggested practices that they could try in their classroom, and then they had to implement, and they had to share out with the rest of the staff in terms of what their successes and challenges were related to those practices. The other thing that we had to do is that our building had done a lot of work in terms of trauma-informed practices. We were one of the key grant schools, and so we spent a lot of time as a staff talking about the impact of trauma in terms of behaviors, in terms of academic growth. And so, they had done some really crucial foundational work in terms of changing teacher mindset around behaviors. But then, we also kind of needed to further analyze and involve our focus in terms of trauma-informed practices to make sure that we still have learning at the forefront of what we do. And so, how do we take what we know about trauma and the impact on student behaviors and be mindful of that and help it guide our practices in terms of how we address student behaviors, but maintain that laser-like focus on student learning and make sure that academics don't fall to the wayside as we deal with those behaviors in our classroom? So, that really drove all of our collaboration for the entire course of the school year, those handful of, of things. And then, we came back several times and did data digs and looked again at what our student data was showing us. Our IST team met weekly to look at the data from a little bit higher level. We used that time to make sure that we were not letting students fall through the cracks. We know that our really high-achieving students are pretty self-driven, and, and once they get to that level of advancement or proficiency, they're, they're clicking along. We also know that our students that are really, really struggling academically get lots of additional support, and so, we used that time to make sure that we didn't have kids that were kind of in the middle ground, falling through the cracks. And then, we also used that time to look at more qualitative data, and so, they were doing classroom walkthroughs. They were observing teachers during their literacy blocks. And so, we used that time to talk about things that we noticed in classrooms while we were going through and doing those informal observations that were non-evaluative, but really helped us drive some of the conversations that we had in collaboration. And then, of course, our IST coaches worked together with classroom teachers one-on-one and did individual instructional coaching cycles and worked side-by-side with those teachers in the classroom, particularly adding support when teachers felt like they had tried a number of strategies with a student and they were still plateaued, and they just couldn't find that next thing that was going to connect with the student and help them make more progress. So, our data, I put our 2016-17 data next to our 2017-18. So, we made notable gains in terms of our school literacy data during the course of a year. We still fell short of our 85% goal, but we're moving in the right direction. And what was even more encouraging was that when we looked at our data as it flows, our students, if we look at the same population of students, our, we did consistently make growth across the grade levels. And so, we showed you all of our data. Again, our AGR goes through third grade, and so, you see in fourth and fifth grade, we see less in terms of significant gains. We also have more students in those classrooms, and once we get to grades four and five, writing comes into play more, and the DRA scores don't. We can expect kids to make significant gains in the under grades in terms of their DRA score and the level that they're reading at, but overall, we grew, and it was consistent across the building. So, we didn't see it in pockets. We saw it everywhere, which was encouraging.
Okay. Webster-Stanley Elementary. And so, their two goals focused around the writing and the reading. And so, you'll see that they were looking for a writing scale score of a .5 increase from beginning of the year on-demand to end of the year on-demand writing, and then 80% of students meeting or exceeding the end-of-year benchmark for their grade level as measured by the DRA. And so, sharing the data again, that, and it, it's the same data that you received, it just looks a little bit different. And the nice thing about the data, looking at it through the, the data through this eyes from the beginning of the year to end of the year, is you can see that not only do we have to, we have to continue improving where we're at, the, the score changes. So, the beginning of the year for our third grade, we're at a 28/30. By the end of the year, we need to have kids that are meeting or exceeding a third level 38. So, it's a nice look to see that. So, total number of students at Webster, 326. Meeting or exceeding was 85% of the students. The students that did not meet that expectation were 15%. And so, this was interesting to, the staff has had a lot of conversations around elaborative writing, and when they did the profile of practice, their big hypothesis there is that second sentence, that there's a connection between students being able to think more deeply about text and their ability to elaborate in writing. And so, they think they're on to something with that. So, they said they're going to continue looking at both oral and written expression next year tied to that elaboration piece. And then, here are some of the strategies that were utilized.
Questions or comments?
There's no question that our staff works really, really hard to ensure student success. What I do find troubling, though, are some of these results as, as shared in the, the staff report where, especially in the area of reading, many schools did not attain that 85%. But, I think it would also be helpful if the data were presented in the same way across the schools. I found the, the Washington report to be very helpful, because you're following students from one year to the next. But, when data are presented in different, different ways, it makes it difficult to, or more challenging to, to analyze and, and understand what's happening across the, across the system. So, in some ways, the, the data that we have in, in these spreadsheets isn't as impressive as some of the things we, we saw up there.
Absolutely. And we can, we can take a look at that for next time that they present next spring and say, we're all going to take a look at the side-by-side and where kids' growth is. So, good feedback. Thank you.
And I appreciate the culture and climate in each school may define how they want to look at their data, and I certainly respect that. But, from a, a district-level perspective, it might be a good idea to have some reporting out that is, is more similar in nature. Thank you.
We can do that in the future. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Well, thank you for your leadership in this area, and we'll look forward to the, the report next year.
Thanks.
Thanks again.
Thanks again. Our next workshop is the Budget Workshop with Mrs. Schnorr.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is going to be short and sweet tonight. Basically, the process for building a budget is we create a budget. We publish that budget. We have to hold a public hearing on that budget. And then the last step is that the board adopts the budget and sets a tax levy. Now, there can be some variation of that. Sometimes we adopt a budget before the budget hearing, and we call it a preliminary budget. Sometimes we wait to prove a budget till after the budget hearing. I mean, there's no, there's no real right or wrong way. The only thing that, the only thing that we're really restricted by is that we short-term borrow. And because of the way cash flow is, we short-term borrow, as you know. And they demand that we have a budget on file before we can actually short-term borrow. So if the board, so we can't technically, we could wait till October to do any kind of budget approval, but our short-term borrowing requires that we have a budget approved before we short-term borrow. So that's usually why we do a budget approval sometime in August or September, even though we're not really finalizing the budget at that time. We're a little further behind than usual on budget for one main reason, is that the feds are now requiring that school districts budget by building. We have not done that before in this district. One of my favorite quotes from Stan is that "we are a school system, not a system of schools." And this requirement, I think, eventually, maybe not at first, is going to make people look at our buildings rather than our whole system. You know, with 14 elementary schools, we just code all elementary teachers to elementary. We don't code them to the building specifically. And there's a lot of costs that we don't budget per building. Right now, the only thing we actually budget per building is the amount of the budget that the building principal is actually responsible for, their building budget. But the feds are now requiring that we budget by building. And then costs that aren't allocatable by building, like my salary, we're not going to divide by 21 different building codes, is they'll take then, after we've allocated everything to the buildings that seems in our mind to be reasonable to allocate to the buildings, then everything else that's district-wide will then be distributed to those buildings based on a per pupil allocation. So we will truly have a number that says, this is what we spend at Washington versus this is what we spend at Carl Treger. So, you know, I think it's going to make people do comparisons that may or may not be reasonable comparisons because of the way we pay teachers. On a salary schedule, you could have new teachers making $40,000 and experienced teachers making close to $70,000. And if you have a building that just simply has more experienced teachers, that's really going to make it look like you're spending more on that building when it's really just a factor of what the experience level of the teachers are in that building.
So is this budgeting as just personnel, or is that budgeting like everything?
Everything.
So we could be off of, one has a new boiler and one has a 50-year old boiler, and you could have huge difference, like those kind of things?
Buildings and grounds, right now, we are going to keep as a district-wide.
Okay, so that's not.
But then that will be distrib, you know, so then at the end of the year, when we know what our whole maintenance expenditures were, those will be distributed over all buildings.
Equally?
Equally, or on a per pupil basis.
Okay.
Now, we could, because DPI, because this is so new, DPI is dragging their feet a little bit on coming up with criteria as to what districts have to put at the building level and what they don't. Right now, DPI is saying, eh, do what you want. I'm really hoping that they come up with some criteria saying, this you have to allocate to the budget buildings, this you don't. Because if we're, if we're going to be compared to Appleton, or NINA, or Menash, or whoever they're going to compare some of our schools to, and let's just pick on NINA, they distribute things to buildings that we decide not to distribute to buildings, you know, it could skew the data.
And it's not apples to apples.
Exactly. So we're hoping over time that DPI comes up with some more stringent criteria on what you have to allocate to the buildings and what you don't.
I think as this goes on and DPI starts to bring that criteria, and hopefully, I think our, I would beg for us to be extremely transparent with this and extremely like, this is why this school has this spending and this has this. And I know it's a lot more work, but I don't want our parents, new parents, old parents looking at those and having those, thinking that there's a discrepancy that there that's not really there. Or thinking that one school is, you know, having more than another school when it's not. It's, they're equal, but the pay is different, or the, you know, bills are different because of different things. And how do you put that into budget with what schools are, you know, Title I, and what schools get this money and what schools get that? What a mess.
Yeah. Because you know that this is going to mean people are going to compare your schools.
Exactly.
And then people are going to take your test scores and compare how much you spend in a school.
And how that relates to a test score.
Right. And it's, so it's very scary, I think, what this is, what the ramifications of this mean. But anyway, that's what we're up against. So it's taking us a little bit of time because, you know, as I said, in the past, if you were an elementary teacher, we coded all the elementary teachers to elementary. We didn't code them to Washington versus Treger. And so we had to set up all of those account codes and then, you know, make sure that if you're Susie Smith and you're at Treger, that your account code is now, that's where you're put. So it's taking us a little time to pull all of that together.
And then when you move teachers, what a mess.
And then we have to, and payroll-wise, we have to make sure that everybody has the right account code for payroll.
Teachers that travel.
And we have teachers that travel. Mm-hmm. And then you have teachers that change jobs.
Yep.
And so, I mean, business office and HR do a lot of communicating now, but it's going to be even more crucial that.
Where did this come, never mind, I just read it. I was wondering if it was Fed or if it was.
It's the federal government. So, and DPI, so DPI is just passing down a federal requirement. So more on that as we continue. As you know, we are constricted by the revenue limit formula. This was put in place in '92-'93, and it essentially controls the combination of our tax levy and our state aid. It's based on our September pupil count and 40% of summer school, and it's a rolling three-year average. And the reason they do a rolling three-year average is because if you're declining in pupils, just because one student leaves, I mean, our revenue limit now is $9,200. Just because one student leaves doesn't mean we save $9,200. And just because we got one more student doesn't mean it costs us $9,200. So that's the rationale behind a three-year rolling average. New this year is a low spending or low revenue provision. So they looked at districts that have a revenue limit below $9,400. And we are currently at $9,272. So this provision helped us tremendously. So that provided us about $1.2 million in additional revenue. That's going to go up $100 a year until it gets to $9,800. So they also do what's called per pupil aid. Before, 14-15, in 14-15, the revenue limit formula used to go up by any, from a CPI increase to a $75 increase. It kind of varied every year. But starting in 15-16, the state government has held that revenue limit increase to zero. But they have done what's called a per pupil aid, which started out at $200 per pupil per year, it's now up to $600 per pupil. But my concern about that, and I've let legislators know that, is every district gets that $600 per pupil, whether you're a high spender or a low spender, or whether you have tremendous property value or low property value, everybody gets that same $600 per pupil. And it went up $200 this year, so that it's now at $600 per pupil. That was an additional $1.8 million for us this year. But on the expenditure side, the CPI is 2.13, as I told you all. If we gave all bargaining units a 2.13% increase, we would have had a $675,000 budget deficit this year. So what you would agree to is that I could negotiate with all employee groups a 1.26% increase, and that would give us a $31,000 deficit, which is a much more manageable number. We also have salary schedule adjustment, where we allow employees to move through the salary schedule. NTEA has a salary schedule. The paraprofessionals, OPEA, and the teachers all have salary schedules, food service. That, that costs us one, a little over $1 million. If we were to get an 8% health insurance increase, which we'll be lucky to get an 8% health insurance increase, the way things are going with our claims this year, that'd be an additional $676,000. And then other benefits, you know, things like WRS, the retirement and FICA, they're a percentage of salaries, so salaries go up, obviously those benefits go up. And then we're carrying a deficit from 17-18. If you look back to the workshops we did in 17-18, we had like a $800,000 deficit, and we took care of all of it, but about 310. So we have that going forward.
So what's the total deficit then? We're up over 2 million?
Well, actually, the top one, we have, we'd have, we'd have, just shy of a $700,000 deficit, but part of that is the carryover from last year.
Okay, so that's everything.
That's including, I'm sorry, that includes everything. So if you were to gave all employee groups the total 2.13 CPI with all of those factors, that would be our deficit. So by offering employees less wipes out all of that deficit.
Okay, thanks.
And bear in mind that sometimes there's good news, but this is all pre-audit numbers. But Sue and Kelly are so good at numbers that where they're very close, big surprises are probably not coming.
So some things to keep in mind for 18-19 is, you know, I've talked to you a little bit about moving police liaison officers to Fund 80. That does free up $160,000 in Fund 10. However, that means your Fund 80 lev, tax levy will go up by that amount. We have a two-and-a-half staffing savings at the secondary level. Elementary is really stable for now. There's no increases, no decreases. They're stable at last year's amount. We do have two-and-a-half staffing savings at the secondary level, which they already talked about. And but part of that is we are looking to use that money for some of the elementary behavioral management issues that Matt talked about in his presentation.
The Wisconsin Association of School Boards Board had talked about the use of Fund 80 and moving school resource officers into that, so I would advise that that be reviewed more closely because my understanding is from the conversation at the board table with several attorneys present, is that you may have to broaden the scope of the use of those officers beyond use in the schools during school time and looking at the impact or implications of what that would mean.
So it could change their duties.
It's not as simple as putting the, for example, the elementary strings teachers into Fund 80. So there are some other implications for that, and it's just important that we make sure that we know what those are and what ramifications there are.
DPI has a whole page dedicated to whether you have police liaison officers in Fund 80 or not, and what criteria you have to follow if you're going to move them there. And as an exec team, we looked at that, but we'll continue to monitor that.
Great, awesome.
And bearing in mind, the responsibility needs to go district-wide to also serve non-public school students as well, as part of it, because it's a district-wide impact.
I think that's my last slide. I know it's short, sweet, simple, but that's kind of all we, I mean, there's nothing really new or interesting to talk about at this point.
The one thing that is an advantage this year is our revenue side is more predictable because the legislature, remember, didn't finalize a budget until late September, early October. The legislature kept tinkering with the revenue side, and so it was way late last year on the revenue side.
Right, this is the second-year biennium.
Right.
So we really know what we have. My only, the warning that I've heard is because we're heading into another two-year biennium next year, that they may crack down on schools again.
November's election will be a deciding factor on what schools look like for the following year.
Right.
Other comments or questions?
When, so when should we expect the next update?
In the past, we, I've tried to do a budget hearing in either August or September. I need to work with Kelly, your controller in my office, to see when she expects to have everything finalized, and so then I can talk to you about when to set a budget hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Thank you for your work on this. I know we're hearing from you a few more times before the budget is finalized.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. All right, next we move into the Consent Resolution Agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Is there anyone who wishes to pull an agenda item? I would like to pull 1B, 2, and 3.
Let's do them all individually.
Let's do them all. All right, so Resolution 1A, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the appointments, resignations, and salary schedule as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Since this is a consent agenda, you may call the roll.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Eliza?
Aye.
Evin?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Hershaw?
Aye.
Hershaw, aye. Motion three.
Thank you. Resolution 1B, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the retirement as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved. Second.
We only have one retirement tonight, and that would be Diane Stubber, longtime secretary, school secretary in the district. She's retiring from Oshkosh North High School at the end of August, so we will enjoy her services through the registration period, which is appreciated. And she's been employed with the district since 1994, and we certainly wish her a wonderful retirement moving forward, and thank her for her contributions over these last 22-plus years to the district. Please call the roll.
Eliza?
Aye.
Evin's aye.
Aye.
Garner, aye.
Aye.
Hershaw?
Aye.
Hershaw, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Resolution number two, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the Fox Valley Technical College Riverside Program contract as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved. Sorry.
We have a second. Thank you. I know our staff worked very hard on these staff reports, and this is one that has drawn a lot of attention over the years because it serves a very special group of our students. And I just wanted to give Mr. Kemer an opportunity to give us a two-to-three-sentence summary of what we're voting on tonight.
Yeah, so every year we have to recertify our contract with Fox Valley Tech for the Riverside program, which serves students who are 16 and a half years old or older that may be credit deficient that need an alternative path to graduation. So the program has been highly successful. You know, we've had a waiting list of the program going on a number of years now, but fortunately, students tend to move through that relatively quickly. And it also ensures that we receive dedicated candidates into the program. So the program itself costs about $85,000 per section. We have three sections total. Each of those sections is able to take on, let's see here, we have 42 slots available for the entire Riverside program total. So like I said, it's been a very valuable program to us in the past and continues to be.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Kemer.
Sure.
Please call the roll.
Aye.
Evin's aye.
Aye.
Garner, aye.
Aye.
Hershaw?
Aye.
Hershaw, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Resolution three, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the following meal prices for the 2018-19 school year as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. Elementary breakfast, $1.40. Elementary lunch, $2.15. Elementary, excuse me. Middle school breakfast, $1.40. Lunch, $2.65. And high school breakfast, $1.65, and lunch, $2.75.
So, does that, or no? Do we second, oh yeah, for the discussion. I'm going to second that.
Again, our staff worked diligently on these reports, and in the interest of transparency and openness, I just was looking for a couple-sentence summary, so the listening and openness, I just was looking for a couple-sentence summary so the listening public and the board have a reminder of what these represent. So Mrs. Schnorr has joined us to answer those questions.
The Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010 is a federal act that regulates food service. Our food service program is highly subsidized by the federal government, so they set the rules, and if you don't follow the rules, you don't get the federal subsidy. And it's well over half of our program is federal subsidy. The rule that they came up with in this Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act is they provide a subsidy based on the number of free meals, reduced meals, and full-priced meals that a school district serves. And the subsidy for free meals is the highest, obviously, because we don't charge children those meals. They also subsidize reduced-priced meals, and they subsidize full-priced meals. But they do not want the district's full-priced meals, or they don't want free meals to subsidize the full-priced meals. So over time, the federal government is requiring that the amount that we charge students for a full-priced meal has to be at or greater than the federal subsidy to us for free meals. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that the free meals aren't subsidizing full-priced meals. But they don't require that you get there overnight. There's a formula that every year you have to increase your prices no more than a dime so that eventually you'll get to the point where the amount you charge full-priced students is at or greater than the federal subsidy for free meals. So that's why every year we have to raise our prices by this formula. This formula required us to increase our prices by 13 cents this year, but they also cap your increases at 10 cents.
I'm following.
Can you, some districts have actually said, you know.
I give up.
Yeah, and they're not even, they're not, they're not taking the subsidy. Not many, but there are two. I don't think we can afford to do that, so we will play by their rules.
Okay. Well, as long as somebody knows what they are.
And it looks like our prices are in line with those of other schools.
Yes. They did check around, because everybody's going through this, it's not just us.
Right, right.
And we're going into a second year in a row of having food service operate in black and subsidizing. And that's thanks to the entrepreneur work of food service programs, as well as creative menus that are not the same thing every six weeks.
Yes.
So our food service director and her staff deserve lots of credit for that change around and turnaround.
They're doing fabulous. Any other questions or comments on the school lunch fees for next year? If not, please call the roll.
Gerner?
Aye.
Gerner, aye. Hershak?
Aye.
Hershak, aye. Hershak, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Eliza?
Evans? Evans, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mrs. Schnorr. Are there, there don't appear to be any individually considered resolutions at this time, so we'll move on to requests for future agenda items. There was a lengthy list in our packet tonight of future agenda items for June 27th. That'll be action-packed and thrilling to watch, so please tune in if you're so inclined. There's a lot of activity going on at the end of June.
No commercials.
No commercials. Thrilling.
All right. Any announcements at this time? Okay, seeing none. We will be adjourning to executive session. Two, consider the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility under State Statute 19.85, Prend 1, Prend C. A, consider the employment of an administrator. B, consider the compensation of administrators. And two, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whether competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under State Statute 19.85, Prend 1, Prend E. A, Oshkosh Education Association or OEA negotiation strategies. B, Oshkosh Paraprofessional Employee Association or OPEA negotiation strategies. And C, Non Teaching Employee Association, NTEA, negotiation strategies.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Hershak?
Aye.
Hershak, aye. Hershak, aye. Hershak, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Eliza?
Evans? Evans, aye. Gerner?
Aye.
Gerner, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, and we will then adjourn to executive session.[1765.53]